I'll go ahead and call to order this regular meeting of the Nelson County Schools Board of Education, August 21st, 2018, at approximately 5:02 PM. We'll start out with the Pledge of Allegiance. So now you get to stand.
(inaudible) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Nelson County Schools Board Mission Statement. The Nelson County Board of Education, representatives of our citizens and entrusted with their children, pledges to support the mission of the Nelson County School District by setting visionary direction to effective policy, oversight, and efficient resource management. The district vision statement, quality education now, learning for life. Mr. Bradley, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, we're good to go.
Okay. Moving on then to item three, energize the world in three A, the student performance. Superintendent Bradley.
So, for those of you that are new to the conversation, we are making history this Friday with our first ever Nelson County Pride Bowl, and our students have been hard at work in preparing for some of the events to happen this week, and we want to celebrate with that intro video to what is Nelson County Pride.
(inaudible)
And so I was standing here, and we were writing a paper, and I said something about, like, when I called between the, and then I remember my teacher was that great, she read it, and then when she read it, she was like crying, and said that I was like, I guess it's been a while, so I'd rather be like, hey, I'm a teacher too, and people would notice, like, but I was comfortable, she really inspired me to want to be a teacher and like change kids' lives, and I'd just like to be that or somebody else would be the case of me, so.
So, Ms. Ferguson, kind of was like my teacher that I was taking a personal, I went to her in grade, and up to that point, there wasn't like one teacher that was, you know, made the difference, and she was that person. I attribute any kind of achievement to kind of how she started that, and she made all the difference, and I'm like, but for being that to her bodies, Nelson County Pride, because like, she made the best of that one.
That'll lead into the superintendent's board conversation.
Before you go that far, so I assume that's posted on YouTube?
It's a Nelson County Schools Facebook page, and it's also on YouTube.
I assume, looking over at you, Ms. Brady, you kind of had the same, I think, reaction that I did, especially there at the end, talking about very emotional insight by the students.
So, it's clear, in our first few weeks here, the Nelson County Pride is alive and well. Our enrollment is up at nearly every school in Nelson County over the course of the first few weeks, and our conversation around Nelson County Pride is really just beginning as we begin our Nelson County Pride Bowl and Pride Games this Friday. And just wanted to be clear, everyone in the district is invited, the community is invited, we are also making a special invite to retired educators, employees of the Nelson County Schools, to be a part of this conversation. They are judging the appetizers thrown down, which after being in Bloomfield Middle School today, we found that certain teams have already been highly strategic and have already narrowed down their two appetizers through a very rigorous process. Additionally, an important part of this conversation about the Pride Bowl is all the senior students that are involved in the game, cheerleaders and players will be coming to the 50-yard line for the coin toss, and they will be bringing with them one person from their Nelson County Schools journey that has been an inspiration to them. And these, it's not really, as we know about football, it's much bigger conversation around community, and that's a tradition that I expect to continue to evolve over the coming years. For those of you, the trophy is sitting over there behind Mr. Hill, that'll be placed by Mike Todd Cissok. For those of you that know Mike Todd, he made that happen, he's also got a stand, he's handcrafting that it will sit upon, and that'll be passed back and forth between the two teams. The invites for those of you that are interested in passing those on forward are also over there by the helmet. To a little bit of academics, the, and to thinking about shared leadership, Mr. Chase Goff is going to set us up tonight for our first quarterly Ignite, and I want to give a little context for these quarterly Ignites, because they're something we haven't, we haven't done previously. Each quarter, one of the directors, the Director of Workforce Development, the Director of Community Health Engagement, the Director of Student Leadership and Learning, will have a quarterly cycle where they really are updating us on the state of the union for that work. So, they're talking about the priorities, the short-term and long-term process of product that we're looking to create in Nelson County Schools. And Mr. Chase Goff leads that conversation tonight, and I think it's fitting that we lead off with this, because our goal with Inspired Student Leadership and Learning is very much about helping schools and facilitating conversation around what's, what is inspired leadership and learning look like in our school, what are our students leading with, and our goal is to deepen that conversation throughout this school year. So, that's where we'll begin our first quarterly Ignite for student leadership and learning.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. I don't want to take too long tonight. We do have our inaugural Spartan Football Game that's about to take place with the two middle schools combined. As we talk about student leadership, that's definitely one of those venues that many of our students participate in, and I'm excited to go watch that. As we start thinking through these cultural priorities, we will come back to this over and over again, because priorities mean that they play a role in everything that we do. So, talking about uniting our district family to a shared vision of Nelson County Pride, providing future-centered learning experiences, and bringing people from across the community to the table, that really forms the basis of the work in student leadership and learning, and it'll be the basis of what we do moving forward as well. So, part of this process has really been to think about these three questions, student leadership and learning in the context of these three questions. First, how do we deepen the conversations with our community about the purpose of school? We ask what the purpose of school is, and we talk about shared leadership, it's important that we bring people to the table to have that conversation. And so that's the first question. The second one is, how do we align resources that will support that conversation moving forward? You all have played a huge role in that, and you continue to play a huge role in that part of the conversation. And then lastly, how do we, and when I say we, I mean our students, staff, school leaders, community leaders, how do we define community-centered curriculum? Because in defining that, what we'll be able to do then is really create some powerful learning experiences for our kids. But before we can get really to that level, we have to define kind of what it is and what we're talking about. So really, those three questions form the basis of what I want to talk to you all about tonight. So when we look at that first question, how do we deepen the conversations with our community about the purpose of school? There's a lot of ways that we have begun that work. If you go to the next slide, this is something, and we've started this conversation in every building, we've been to six of the 12 schools, I believe, every Tuesday and Thursday, we have time set up on a tri-weekly cycle, so in three weeks, we will visit every, every school, and that will continue to occur throughout the course of this year. And really, that's about creating opportunities for us to collaborate together. And as you look at this list, collaboration, we're in this together, it's focused very long-term, about making investments, about being able to tell a story, things that are recurring, it's embedded in the work that we're doing. And so part of that process has been, we've started this process with schools, is allowing schools to create their own model of what collaboration looks like. So, our very first conversation with principals of the six that we've been to is, one, how, what structures do you have in place that will allow this type of conversation to exist? We called it a C3, Community Centered Collaborative, and each school is kind of making that their own, because each school has a unique story. But really, that will be a process that we'll be able to come back to over and over and over again, that principals will be able to collaborate, not just with the teachers in their building, but the guidance counselors, instructional coaches, their classified staff, they'll be able to use that tool and come back to that over and over again, that will really have their priorities and be able to tell their story as a school. And that's been one of the first things that we've started, like I said, we've been to six schools so far, we'll continue that on Thursday, and that's been a really powerful thing for us to be able to see each school's unique story, especially for me, coming from outside of the district, that's been a really special thing for me to see. Some additional ways that we're helping to answer that question about, with our community about the purpose of school is, and Robyn Handelser will be talking more about this, but we intend this school year for every teacher in this district to be able to go visit other teachers in this district, so providing opportunities for that to take place. Our instructional coaches will kind of take the lead on a lot of that work of facilitating where they're going and when they're going, and that work, because it will be a process, but that will be something that we will, we will make sure every teacher has an opportunity to do, because that helps deepen the conversation about what is community and what is the purpose of school. Secondly, something that is currently occurring is we have, at the district level, have gotten access to state assessment results, those are currently embargoed, so those are not something that we get to talk about openly, but really, this is the process that we've shared with principals, as you look at your data, you know, data has names, those have names attached to it, and those names have stories. And so as we think about our students' stories and what that data tells us, really, that's the lens that we want our school principals to be thinking about. As you look through your data, what the shared leadership look like in the data review process, who comes to the table to have those conversations with you, how are we going to celebrate our students and teachers, and energize the world with the goals for this coming year? And then based on the story and your priorities for the year, what data is most essential for you creating the future you want within your school community? That's the paradigm that we've really laid out for schools to be able to answer. So when I come back in November, and the data will no longer be embargoed, that is, that is really the story that I will be telling you all, is what are, what the work that our schools have done around our priorities and looking through this lens through state assessments. In addition, Laura Arnold will be talking to you all more about teacher externships, that's a process that will allow us to strengthen this conversation about what is the purpose of school and what does it mean to be a community. When our teachers begin having these externship opportunities, it'll be a powerful experience for, for all of our teachers. We'll be doing an energy summit this year, what that looks like and the questions that we want to talk about, it's something that we will begin having conversations about, but that energy summit will be a powerful opportunity for us to once again explore the questions of what is the purpose of school and what does it mean to be a community, that is first and foremost on our minds as we think about that. So, those type of experiences are what our teachers and to some degree even our students will be seeing this year and experiencing this year, that'll really help us deepen that conversation. The second question that I asked was how do we align our resources to support this conversation? You all have already begun that work. When you made a decision as a board to roll out one-to-one Chromebooks, that is, that is one way that we are reallocating resources or realigning resources to facilitate this work. I talked to you all at our working session last time about some of the work moving forward for our students completing digital citizenship curriculum, for our teacher leaders in the Ignite Academy, and the work that Jamie Chanel is doing with that group, and then with our families and trying to reach out to them throughout the course of this year so that they have a better understanding of what a Chromebook is, what it does, and how that's impacting the work that our students are doing inside the walls of the school, so that really we'll be able to extend learning far beyond those four walls of classroom. That work will continue as, as we move forward. So as part of our Chromebook rollout, all of our schools, I believe at this point, have got their Chromebooks out. We, when we have taken these site visits, we've got to go in classrooms and see students using those, and it's been a, it's been a good experience to see how teachers are taking some ownership over that. What I want to do at this time is recognize some people that have been very instrumental in this process, and I will tell you that, as I said at the working session, that the Chromebook initiative has been a team process, it required a lot of different moving parts in order to make that happen. So Jesse Morgan, CIO, has been one of the huge pieces of that, and he's had some very special people that have helped him as part of this process. I'm not sure if one of them is here yet.
He's not here yet.
So we may have to interrupt at some point, because we do want to make sure that he gets recognized. He's been in football practice, which is definitely another student leadership opportunity, and he'll be joining us shortly.
So, we haven't had student workers in a little bit, so kind of a little nervous about bringing student workers on board, but we brought two student workers on board this summer, and they have been beyond amazing. They're a perfect example of what happens when you give students the right tools and get out of their way, and that, that's what we've done with these two students. So, there's one here right now, it's Cody Arnold. He's been helping in technology since... Cody has been helping people, just non-official student worker, since looking over at your school. He helps, he was running the soundboard, the auditorium stuff, all of that for Darryl Parks at Nelson County High School when he was in middle school. So, I mean, he's, he's been instrumental for this district for a long time, and fine young man, he is dependable, he's one of those guys, you give him something to do, and it just gets done. And he has any problems, he lets you know, but I can't speak highly enough of you, tell your mom and dad, I assume, yeah, you're raising a fine young man, he's spectacular. So, we're going to interrupt later for our other student worker, he'll be here in just a little bit.
Introduce some soccer player, too.
Yeah.
Thanks, Cody. Thanks, Cody. And then, in addition to our student workers, part of the work this summer has really been around teacher leaders from every school building, empowering teachers to take ownership over this Chromebook process, and really, even deeper than Chromebooks, innovation in the classroom and what it means to really push those boundaries and reimagine possibility in our schools. So, I'm going to introduce Ms. Jamie Chanel, and she's going to recognize a few teachers.
All right, so I had a conversation with Chase, and Chase told me that I had to take two teachers. That was so hard to do. So, I kind of narrowed down to two amazing and outstanding teachers that are reimagining possibilities, and I want to give a quote from George Kuros, which is the author of The Innovator's Mindset. He says, "Should we be a sage on the stage, or a guide on the side, or the architect of learning? Well, the answer is that teachers should really be all of those. But the art of teaching is figuring out when you should be which one." And these two educators have definitely figured out the art of teaching. So, the first that I would like to recognize is TJ Metcalf. So if TJ will come up, by the way, he didn't... Yeah, it's all good, I can talk though, I'm good at talking. So, as I reached out to, as I reached out to TJ's colleagues, just to say, hey, give me some characteristics of TJ, and here were some of the characteristics. Hardworking, diligent, self-starter, he ignites change, cooperative, engaging, empowering, encouraging, motivating, interactive, committed, and flexible, and that came from three people. So you can imagine what a rock star he is in the classroom. Thank you, buddy. So, the second teacher I would like to recognize tonight is Ms. Megan Miles. And Ms. Megan, if you'll come up, and Isaac, if you'll come up as well. Megan did not know she was getting this either.
Thank you.
All right, Isaac, if you'll go ahead, and you can start reading.
Hi, I'm Isaac Cole, and I'm a third grader at Foster Heights, oh, elementary. Ms. Miles was my first grade teacher. Ms. Miles was a great teacher, and she still is. She is awesome. When my mom said I was bored, she taught me how to use all of my own code base. Helped me get into coding, coding, and she helped me, and she also helped me to be more creative by creating and building Lego stories. Ms. Miles has every single award in the world, except the worst teacher in the world.
So, I wanted to bring a child up from Ms. Miles' class, because that just speaks volumes, so. So, thank you so much, Ms. Miles. Just so you know, Ms. Miles is our first grade pilot teacher for our Chromebooks, our one-to-one Chromebooks, so just so you know. Thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
Can't hardly follow that. Glad I'm done. Awesome, thank you, guys. So, once again, as we consider how are we aligning resources to support this conversation, one of the things that we have tried to look at from a district perspective is empowering schools with additional resources to facilitate these conversations. So in the next few weeks, between myself, Tiffany Clark with Gifted Minds, various other funds that come from the district level, we'll be really returning some ownership of that back to the school level, and giving schools those resources that will really facilitate these conversations. So schools may choose to use these in a variety of ways, they may, they might have their teachers go visit each other's classrooms and be able to get a sub for the day to facilitate that, they might be able to go visit another school that's, you know, do site visits as part of that, they might want to do a reading together, those sort of things, it's really going to further this conversation. We're returning some of the ownership and some of this, the financial piece back to the school level, so that principals and schools have more ownership over, over the process. So that's another way that we're attempting to align resources. Then this last question, how do we define community-centered curriculum? That's really the question we hope to be able to answer throughout the course of this year. Hopefully, by the time that I'm standing before you this time next year, we will have a really good definition of what that looks like and the starting point for our schools in this conversation. So, that would be the goal for us moving forward as part of the work with student leadership and learning, and I'm just grateful for you all for the investments that you all have made to begin this process, and the decisions that you have made that were really, that have really started these conversations, and hopefully, each month, we'll be able to come back to you with some that will continue to further that conversation. All right? Thank you all.
I want to ask one thing.
All right.
You should know I'm going to ask some. I know about when, what I do each year is I go back to what we did the same thing last year, because I keep everything. I want to know, is there any way that we can get a report on our test scores sooner than November?
Yeah, absolutely, we can give you the, we just wanted to come back in November, because by November, we feel like the schools are going to be able to have a much more robust conversation on how they're setting goals and using that. For, part of our conversation internally was, we, test scores absent of the school's story and their goal-setting, we felt like wasn't going to create the value, but we can definitely get that to you as soon as they're, as soon as they become public, you'll have those along with everyone else, and we'll, we'll make sure to share that very clearly.
Slightly different this year because of some changes at the state level.
That's right.
As the times go, but they'll still be publicly available when they always have been, there just won't be some of the publicity behind it.
Where they changed a lot of it.
Right, absolutely.
Chase, we do have the other student here now.
Yeah, because I'm on that board commissioner, and they, we get an update on when everything is what rockers need, so, yeah, thank you.
So, we'd like to recognize Alex Height, he's our, our other student worker, and he approached me, he's a senior this year, he approached me very early in his junior year, he approached me in the fall about possible internship, things like that, continued to email me throughout the year, very persistent, and to put that in perspective, I've seen, I've seen adults not even show up for a job interview, and he's, he's emailing me, like, hey, you got an opening, is that position open yet? And he has been phenomenal. Again, this is a perfect example of giving a kid, a student, the right tools, getting out of the way, letting him do the work. I didn't say numbers earlier when we were talking about Cody, but how many, how many Windows machines did you guys upgrade over the summer?
Almost all of them.
Yeah, so I mean, it was probably, it's a great answer, I like that. So, I mean, they probably upgraded somewhere around four or 500 computers from Windows 7 to Windows 10 over the summer. How many Chromebooks do you think you personally have repaired, like physically repaired?
Okay, 25, 30.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, it's the start of school, so they're replacing monitors, they're replacing keys, they're replacing anything that breaks on the Chromebooks, and then doing everything else that we ask them to do, and he's going to school, and he's co-op with us, so he gets, you know, three, four hours a day in the afternoon with us, does anything we need, if we need something after hours, I just can't speak to how much we appreciate it, very hard workers, and your parents, your parents are here?
Yeah, they're on the video camera.
You're raising a fine, you're raising a fine young man, I mean, we, it's just, you should really be proud. Got to watch him play football Friday night, excellent football player as well, if you haven't got to go, go watch him, number 32. So, thank you, thank you very much, Alex.
Appreciate it.
And obviously, he has fantastic hair, too. Want to always be like that.
Thank you all very much.
So, going on into item number five then, Operations Consent Agenda. 5A, Information Personnel Action, B, Treasurers Report, C, Bills and Claims, D, Monthly Financial Report, E, Balancing Sheet, F, Leaves of Absence, G, Minutes from Previous Meeting, H, Overnight Out-of-State Trips, I, Fundraiser Requests, J, School Schedules, K, Master Schedules, and I, Short School Day. All these are part of the board packet that we would have received towards the end of last week. Any questions about any of the items?
Yes, I do. I got another one. University of the Cumberland's, who's, who is that?
Which item?
We gave them, it's in the Bill Claims, that's my thing, it's money, we, we have a, well, we paid them some money, I'd like to know whose, what program that was.
Yeah, we can totally follow with that.
Okay, okay. Yeah, because that just seems strange, I didn't know whether they were in that program from New Haven, or with, you know, what program I'm talking about?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I just wanted to know where that went, because it's a pretty big mound, for me, it's a pretty big mound, so I'd like to know.
Not a problem, we can follow.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, then we need a motion on the Operations Consent Agenda.
Wait a minute, do we have a motion with omitting this, this report, though? Is it, it's not a, my answer, my question answered, didn't answer?
It's not going to change the report, any.
Yeah, well, if, if that doesn't come out of that pocket, that comes from a different, that came from a different gun.
That hand's already been paid.
Huh?
It's already been paid.
I want to know, though, what it is, you know, because it's in that report.
That shouldn't affect us, approving just because it's already, everything here is paid.
Okay, whatever. I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion by Ms. Brady?
I'll second it.
Second by Ms. Dye, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, motion passes, four to one. Moving on to item number six, dedicated to our community, 6A, the Pre-Audit Annual Financial Report, Ms. Owens.
Yes, so the pre-audit AFR was presented and discussed at the working session, and you guys have had a little bit more time to review that, and I'm just here today asking for approval for it.
Okay, so, back on the first Thursday. So back on the first Thursday, no, second Thursday, first Thursday? Can't remember which day it was that we had our work sessions. We had discussions on the pre-audit AFR. I know that, Ms. Owens, you were there and presented quite a bit on it, as well as I believe Mr. Hawkins was there to fill in some pieces as well. Do we have any follow-up questions from that day? Did I do Ms. Dyne or Ms. Berry?
No. No, wait. I got to pull it up.
Got you. Okay. Okay. So if there aren't any questions, then we need a motion to approve the pre-audit AFR?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Berry. Second by Mr. Dickerson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Owens. Five B, the LGEKU rate case intervention. Sounds like another interesting one.
Yes, that is actually, the Louisville Gas and Electric companies have announced, and the Kentucky Utilities Company have announced their intent to submit to the Public Service Commission to increase electric and gas rates. And we currently have what I believe is three schools that are a part of that company. New Haven specifically is benefiting from a pilot rate through that system as well. And the intent that they submitted is actually to not only do away with the pilot rate, but also increase rates. And this happened a couple of years ago as well. The KSBA was hired at that time, or put together a team at that time to help basically fight for school districts on those rates. At that time, there were only eight school districts in the state that chose not to participate. Their fee is divided out among all participating school districts. So we can, they can estimate the amount based on the participation last time, but what they'll do is they'll basically go to bat for us. There's a resolution in your packet, and I'm asking for approval of that tonight to allow KSBA to represent us in that case.
And so from this, it looks like that the school district's proportionate share is going to be somewhere between $251 and $377.
That is what it appears. They've asked us to put a max limit on it because it will be dependent on how many school districts participate. I believe I have in there $500. I agree that more than covers. I believe we will be closer to the $277 amount, but the amount that we could potentially save with them going in and going to bat for us to get those rates down will be, will more than compensate for, for that amount.
Back a couple of years ago, same kind of scenario played out.
2016.
And at that time, the cost savings or cost avoidance on that rate increase more than covered what we participated in as far as our dollar share. I know I've already seen this pop up on some other school district agendas this month as well, where they've also joined to support KSBA and that, I'll call it a negotiation, or we could use the term fight, whichever you might like to have.
Yes, it depends on how far it goes.
Depends on how far it goes.
I'm just asking for your commitment to partner with KSBA.
Okay. Any other questions on it? Okay, then we need a motion for the Kentucky Board of Education to authorize Superintendent Bradley to provide funding support to KSBA in this PSC discussion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Breeding.
Second.
Second by Ms. Berry. All in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Owens. Appreciate it. Moving on to item number six, C, the local planning committee update. Mr. Sanders.
Yes, and we do have our committee complete now, so we're ready to present that to you tonight. We have a, a good group of people put together here. I'm excited to work with them and get moving forward with this process. Stephen Ward was supposed to be here tonight to talk to you a little bit about the process and where we're at in it. He's tied up in traffic, so he was, he was trying to make it. Doesn't look like he's going to get here. So other than that, that's what I have for you tonight. We're just ready, like I said, to get going, see where Stephen's at with his, with his building, building follow-throughs, and then we'll, we'll get moving. Hopefully, by the end of October, we should be ready to start meeting, hopefully, hopefully.
And to put a little bit of context on that, I know Ms. Breeding, who's going to be the board representative on this committee, and myself, it would be five years ago now, I believe, we're on the last committee, and, and this is for us, or I should say, this committee, based upon the information that Stephen is looking to provide in this evaluation, to identify what the priority facility issues, the facility plans are.
They will go through each building, they'll go through each building, then they'll, they'll present to us, and then we'll know through the committee and try to decide what we want to do over the next four years.
And I think, there is, as a great example of this was, five years ago, some of the priorities that were identified that we have been able to complete was the Thomas Nelson High School auditorium. I think that may have even been the first priority, because there was a commitment through the years for Thomas Nelson High School. Another one was the early learning center expansion. I know another one that has been on the radar that is, would think still being on the radar is the New Haven School renovation there and, and some things as far as the way that building is laid out. But this committee is the group that will do the touring, they'll base recommendations off of what Stephen Ward will be presenting as well. Glad you got it through the traffic. And...
Did a lot of sitting still is what I did.
And even though this is a four-year plan, I do like the way that Mr. Bradley has looked at it. We can't look at just the short-term future. We've got to look at things only four, five, seven, 10 years out on what the community's going to need, so.
That's correct. I'll let Stephen explain to you where we're at.
Hi, Dave. Sorry I'm late. I wanted to get a little bit of background about how the process has changed. I don't know how much Kevin shared. What has delayed us in some ways is that the Kentucky Department of Education Facilities Group has initiated a new process for setting up the district facilities plan. They've got two kinds of software that they're having issues now. One is called Asset Planner, which is a conditions survey that has to be done on every facility in the district. And the other is called Survey Planner, which is an inventory of all of the spaces in the district. We, even though we've done conditions assessments and inventories in the past, those have been in a spreadsheet format. We have to do them all from scratch, pretty much, this year. We have, we used New Haven as our first one, so we completed that one. We've completed Nelson County High School now, so we have 10 more facilities we still need to do, but they're faster now because we know what we're, or we know how to use the software. We anticipate that we'll work on these, we have to visit every school in order to do this. We think that we'll work through August, through September, and then probably in mid-October, your committee could be seated, is, is what we anticipate happening. We checked, Todd was worried about the timeline associated with that because your district facility plan would have renewed already, but KDE understands what this software has done. Everybody across the state is having to learn how to use this system. They don't mind that things are, are late. The main landmark we need to hit is that the work of your LPC needs to be done in late March, early April in order to be submitted and presented to the Board of Education meeting in June. So that's really the critical landmark of the whole process. For the most part, your LPC process has been fairly short. There hasn't in the past. I've done this, this will be, I think, the fourth time I've gone through this process with you guys. There's almost never been anything contentious, so fingers crossed, we, we have a process pretty quick.
Do you feel like you're still learning the system?
Absolutely.
But New Haven's assessment's already been completed?
It has, yeah.
So we've completed New Haven's assessment without making full knowledge?
No, it's just that every, every building has its own things that we might not have addressed in a previous one. I think we've addressed everything we found at New Haven really thoroughly. We've been in Nelson County High School most recently, and there's things at Nelson County High School that aren't at New Haven, so we had to learn that piece of the system. What you're really doing in the inventory one is pretty straightforward. You just go through every space and say how big it is and does it meet certain criteria. That one's fairly easy. That asset plan or the conditions assessment asks that we look at all aspects of the foundation. And in the case of multiple additions, you have to look at multiple foundations, and you have to look at all aspects of the wall construction, and all aspects of the windows, and all aspects of the sheet metal, all aspects of the roof. So you have to kind of build the building in the software and tell the condition of everything you're seeing. New Haven's built different than Nelson County High School. Thomas Nelson is built different than either of those two whole Kentucky homes built different. So the learning piece is that we have to introduce new pieces of, of building type with each one of these that we do.
Did, since you had made the call, Stephen, is this the third?
This will be the fourth time he's done it, yeah.
So then you've got that prior experience. Is that any benefit? From my viewpoint, having partners that know us and know what we look for, what we expect has been a great piece for a lot of the construction renovation that we've done between you all and VCD Construction. Been a great partnership. Have you seen that that's been a help somewhat because you're already a little bit familiar with our...
It's saving us an awful lot of time. We, we did New Haven and Nelson County High School first. We'll do the two Bloomfield schools next, because those four are the schools that we're least familiar with. All of the other schools, we can do an awful lot of that work in the office, the software populated with all of the information in the office, just by moving through the documents that we already have so that our onsite time can be minimized, which will save a lot of time, honestly.
I like a lot of the construction material pieces of the software.
Right. We can put in, especially for ones like Thomas Nelson, since we did that from the ground up, we can put almost everything into the software before we even go out there. So then it's really just a review of the condition of the building.
Do we have any other questions? Stephen, as always, appreciate your, your work with us here and for you to fight through whatever traffic to be here for what ended up being about 15 minutes, but it's very valuable. We appreciate it.
This is, it's an important process. KDE is watching you guys in particular because I think we got to jump on it. A lot of other school districts are going to be figuring this process out, too, so we may end up helping other ones through it. So, thank you all.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Stephen. And thank you, Todd. Appreciate your work on this. So moving on into item seven, student stakeholder engagement and seven A, guest comments, the district guest comment policy. Any person wishing to address the board may do so by following these rules. Individuals representing themselves are limited to three minutes. Individuals representing a group are limited to five minutes. Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address, and if you represent a group, state the name of the group you are representing. Other questions? Okay. With that, then, item eight would be adjourned to review session, so I would need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Dickerson.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dyne. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Will we need an executive session tonight?
No.
Okay. No executive session. Mr. Metcalf, Ms. Hurst, can't we get, we've got to get the selfie for Daniel. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
(inaudible)